Okay. We're on? All right, so we can start. This is Friday the 13th. We've had more meetings on Friday the 13th, I think, than any other commission. Yeah.
I'll mention that this, this week, we have palindromic dates. Nine thirteen nineteen backwards is nine thirteen nineteen.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Well, and since, since that's true, how about calling? How about doing a roll call? Backwards.
And we're having a full moon tonight.
Having a full moon.
It's very auspicious.
Oh, great.
All right. Let's go.
Mr. Trunzo.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Hubbard.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Ms. Lucier.
Here.
Ms. Gay.
Here.
Chair.
Is here.
Myself. The only one out is Mike, who I believe is...
We, if you haven't heard, they, Nan just called Margaret downstairs, and Mike is in the emergency room right now. Mr. Strange.
Just right now?
Yeah, right now. So, we don't know any more than that. I had seen him a couple of days ago on the boardwalk, and he, after he got home from Maine, and he looked pretty good, but we'll find out. I hope everything is okay. Ann has let me know this morning that she has her final exam, eye exams, this afternoon, so she won't be here. Dom, Dom's wife, I believe, is having knee surgery or knee replacement surgery today, so he won't be. This is not a good week for... On Friday the 13th. And so, we don't have any minutes that I know of, or they're not attached, so we'll wait on those. And we don't have any correspondence. We don't have any... It's, it's not been a good month for the planning commission, and we haven't done anything, quite honestly. We've sort of been caught in a crossfire between other warring parties, and we'll get to that, and I'll explain a little bit of that, but... This will probably be a relatively short meeting. I guess, let me just start off by congratulating Susan on her election. Tremendous election.
I'm going to miss everyone, I can tell you that right now.
And we will... We're sorry to see you go. We hope you're going to do well as a commissioner. What brand of aspirin would you like us to give you as a gift?
Well, you, you haven't seen the last of me, so I'll probably, I'll probably pop in at some of your meetings.
Okay.
And those joint meetings, too.
Yeah, that's going to be fun. That will really be fun, yeah.
Different hats.
Yeah, that's right.
Tremendous election, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And you've been a big help to us. Other business. As I said, this has not been a particularly good month. Let me tell you what the status is on the CDP. It's a little frustrating. As you all know, the survey's closed on the 30th of August, and I had what I thought was a commitment and the expectation from Debbie that we would at least have raw data to look at today. She actually had confirmed that. We had emails back and forth. She had confirmed that, and when I called to make sure when it was coming, she informed me that she wasn't going to release any, and that it would, we would have to wait until the October meeting for the data reveal.
And why is that, David?
That's... Don't ask me that question.
She did say there were a lot of hand, hand surveys, and they have to input those.
Yeah. What, what she told me is that after they closed the, the survey on the 30th, she picked up a number of hand surveys from the city that had been done, and they were, they were entering at that point in time, this was the, like, the first or second of, of September, they were entering by hand all of that data into the database. So, I presume that that was taking more time than they thought. And so, the bottom line is that she didn't release any data, and of course, the first thing that she informed us, and she had informed Susan the same thing, is that the meeting in October, which will be the data reveal, is to be a joint meeting with the commissioners.
And what is that date?
I don't think it's been set.
It hasn't been set yet, and, and so, we're going to have to decide whether it is at our meeting, and the commissioners come along for the ride, or we have a special meeting, and it really depends a lot on whether we have other business. And, and we need to talk about the other business.
Right.
Which has been delayed, so we'll get to that. So, the bottom line is, we have nothing new on the CDP. Oh, well, there is something new, I guess, we can mention. I had sent her, sent Debbie a note at the time that we talked about having the data for, at least the raw data, and I asked the question, should we, is it time for us to ask for a, an extension of the finishing time, if you like, for the CDP? Ask for an extension from the Office of State Planning? And her response to that was, it's premature to do that, yet... Yet, she contacted, apparently, the other day by phone, contacted Sharon.
They may have had a discussion before that.
And I think you've had a discussion. Can you tell us anything about that, Sharon? Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
I thought Glenn was going to be here to... I thought Glenn's not here. I thought Glenn was going to be here to talk to us about it, but he's not.
Hi, good afternoon. So, yes, Debbie did contact me the other day. We had a, just a brief discussion, because I was concerned that if we didn't ask for an extension, you know, what we're, what we were looking at beyond that. And I, I don't know what conversation she had with you, but, but frankly, you know, she said it was recommended that we, her recommendation was to ask for a one-year extension, just because of the timeline, because of the fact that new, new commissioners were coming on board, and she emphasized the fact that, you know, we, the planning commission need to have a joint meeting with the, with the mayor and commissioners, and also, at that time, request a, a one-year extension. So, the mayor was also involved in that, and the mayor agreed to that, and there's a sample letter that was sent to the mayor that I think his intention is, when he returns, is to send that out.
And who sent the letter to... Debbie sent it to the mayor?
It was just a sample letter that other clients that she has uses.
What I find very strange is she hasn't communicated any of that to the planning commission.
Well, I, I...
And, and it just seems to me that, since the planning commission is, by state law, is charged with the responsibility of the CDP, it seems to me she has a responsibility to talk to the, the planning commission, and she hasn't.
I, I would agree.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I don't know why she hasn't.
But I think we can also talk among ourselves about what meets our needs, too.
Well, that's, that's right. I mean, the, the fact is that when I had first suggested to her that, that we might, is it appropriate time to think about it? Her response was, no, it's too early to, to do that, and yet, she comes back to us no more than two weeks later, and, or comes back to you, and, and proposes this. So, I, you know, it's, it's sort of strange.
I, I didn't realize you'd said that. I mean, I, I think we ought to talk among ourselves about where, where we are, and, you know...
It's a little tough to do until we see the data reveal. She also had promised us, quite honestly, in the communications with me several weeks ago, that she would give us the raw data for today's meeting. And then, when I asked, you know, when is it coming, or in what form, et cetera, she immediately said, oh, that's not part of the legal arrangement. It's, the only thing is that we have a legal responsibility for a, a joint meeting in, in October. You know, it's, it's always an excuse without, and yet, she had, she promised us that. So, and then, we're caught, we had already listed an agenda.
I, I think the, the thing of there going to be new commissioners, that happens every time there's a CDP. There are always new commissioners coming in every year. I mean, so that...
I mean, there's no question we're behind.
We've done nothing.
And, and so, I think we do need an extension, but, but...
So, why did she say no, and then, two weeks, if it was, you know, in fact, two weeks later? I, I don't know. I can't honestly...
It's a little frustrating.
You know, defend. I, I hear you. I agree with you.
I hate to ask you this question, but who did, who did she think she's working for?
Yeah, that, that was my question. Good.
Well, I, she, she knows that her charge is through the planning commission, and I think, you know, in all fairness, the mayor requested that he, she have a conversation with him, and then, I was present at the meeting.
Okay. It is what it is.
No, I was just going to say, it appears that we're in agreement, at least, you know, I mean...
Yeah.
In terms of the way, I mean, we're not so thrilled about how it rolled out, but I mean, I think we're all in agreement that I think an extension is called for, so...
Yeah, I, I think we've known for some time that we're pretty far behind in the process, and I think we all anticipated we were going to have to ask for an extension. I, I do think the proper body, you know, to be consulted on that and to pursue that is the planning commission. And so, I, I agree that it's disappointing and frustrating that it seems to have gone in a different direction. Nothing against the mayor, I mean, he is the mayor of the city, but, you know, the planning commission, as, as, you know, David mentioned, is charged by statute with the responsibility for the CDP. And, you know, as, as to the data review, while that's also disappointing that they weren't able to provide us with raw data, maybe that's a blessing in disguise. I don't, you know, I, I believe it was Mike Strange who pointed out that looking at raw data at this point could be misleading to the public, and I pretty much agree with him. And I reflected on his comment and thought, you know, that, that's probably right. Again, disappointing that it sets us back yet another month, but probably the best, you know, under the circumstances.
And, and I also wanted to add that I'm glad that Debbie has recommended a one-year rather than a six-month extension, because I, I just think it's better to have a little extra time built in because of other issues we're going to discuss today about, I would call it continuity of operations of ourselves with all these transitions. I think we're going to, I, I don't think we have maybe one month of bumpiness. It could be a couple of months here. So, I think we really should have the extra time of a year and get done in nine months, maybe.
Just, just to maybe clarify that a little bit, Jeff, part of their, her rationale for a full year was that she felt that, at the end, there is an interactive period with the state office of planning, of which you have very little control over. So, we don't, that doesn't necessarily give us a full year. So, I think we need to be planning for completing it.
Right, because it does take an extra, what, four or five months through the, through the state process? But David, a year is not really a year.
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any plan to have the charrettes or...
Oh, yeah, but, but, but she had all...
I mean, but in the winter?
I, hopefully, they'll be in the fall. I mean, the, the problem that we've had from the very beginning is, is that Debbie's position has been, do the survey first, let the survey lead you to what the charrette material should be, and of course, we argued that there are some charrettes, which, and I believe we've had two, that could have been had any time. You know, so I think the one on, on, on sea level rise didn't matter. It really didn't matter what, what was in the survey. We were going to have that anyway. And I think the other one was... Well, no, the mixed use was a start. I think we will probably have more on, on, on mixed use. So, I don't feel bad about having those. But she has always said, you got to wait for the survey material to guide you.
Practically speaking, even if we had some of them this fall, I probably wouldn't complete this fall. I'd probably have to complete next spring, because you don't want to have them in the winter.
We'll have to see what the subjects are.
One thing about the timing of the, the data reveal, and, and, you know, obviously, given my transition, I don't, I don't know that I have strong feelings about it, but I do recall very vividly the, the discussion among this group back in the spring when there was supposed to be a data reveal meeting that was going to be joint. But we want, we felt like the planning commission should get the first crack at it. So, if you feel that way about this data reveal, then that should be communicated as well.
Yeah, her, her immediate response, quite honestly, was, look at the contract.
She said that to you?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, I, I don't mind if it's a, if, if it's a joint meeting, but it just seems to me that somewhere along the line, we need, we need to be looking at it. I mean, historically, it's, we haven't done it that way in the past. Pluses and minuses. Let's go on.
But I do think, I think it would be important for us to take the lead and to take a vote on, on the extension with a date plugged in to pass along to...
Well, I think we'll do that after...
I'd prefer doing, I'd like to do it now.
Well, I think it's hard to do until you see the data reveal, and...
We know we want a year.
Yeah, but I don't think it makes any difference in, when you apply for it. You're going to send a letter to Connie Holland, basically saying, here we are in this process, and we think we need extra time, and give us more time.
I think it would be worthwhile, at least, for us just to go on record that we're in support of extending it, and, and knowing what we know. You know, I, I just think it kind of, because, I mean, I don't think what we're saying now is that we're going to apply to the, the state, is basically, I think, stating, I mean, that, that's, in addition to, you know, the, the city saying that they want it, we want an extension, but we still have to get an approval, I assume, an approval from the state that we're, you know, so, I mean, that's a secondary thing. But I, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of that we're on board with that, you know? If, if, I mean, we're, we're, we're sort of grousing about it now, but I mean, I think we're on board that, and we're recognizing that we're delayed, and it's probably, you know, appropriate that we state that we're going to extend the end, the end, the end date, so...
And I'd like to add on to Bunky's comments that I'd like to see a statement. I think it's important that this composition of the planning commission make a statement that we know we're not on track time-wise. So, I support Susan and Bunky having a vote today. I think, I think we should do it, because we're going to have a differently composed planning commission. I don't want it to, to look like all of the deadlines were met, and the new composition, you know, wasn't performing right. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense today. I think we should recognize reality.
Yeah, that, that's a very good point. I mean, we're, we're the ones responsible for the fact that we're not where we want to be or should be.
Does it take a motion? You want a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion.
Okay, here goes. "The comprehensive plan is due to be completed and certified by July 23rd, 2020, approximately 10 months from now. Inasmuch as public participation is the most important phase in the CDP process, the planning commission believes an extension of one year is necessary to allow adequate time for public input, analysis, writing, and review of the final plan. Thus, we authorize the mayor or city manager to submit a request to the Office of State Planning Coordination to extend the date for completion of the CDP to July 23rd, 2021."
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded. Any discussion?
That date, by the way, comes from the official date that's on...
I understand. Okay, we'll take a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Okay, motion has been approved. Moving on. Site plan reviews. Let me give you some background. Again, this is sort of bizarre, what has taken place. If anybody was at the Board of Adjustment Meeting on the, what was it, the 23rd, I think? 23rd or 26th, I believe it was. It was sort of a, it's one of the strangest meetings I, I think I've ever attended. And it impacted the status, ultimately, of both the Baltimore Hotel and the Bell Haven, but in a very strange way. So, let me give you a little background. What took place at the, at, at the Board of Adjustment Meeting first dealt with the Lingo property at, what is it, 320 or 4, 320, Rehoboth Avenue? And it, it basically involved a, 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 a challenge, if you like, to the, to the, to Dom's position of, of requiring a, an extra parking space because of the modifications that had to be made to that building in order to provide a independent staircase and, and safety issues. I mean, it's sort of a bizarre thing. The bottom line is, but it impacted really the, both Langford, and, and to some degree, it impacted potentially the Bell Haven, because the interpretation that Dom gave was that railings on a deck amounted to structure, and therefore, could be counted in, in FAR. Now, it turned out that it didn't impact the FAR for that particular property, but it did impact the requirements in terms of parking. The bottom line is, is that the Board of Adjustment supported Dom's position. Okay? The issue of the railings comes into play, ultimately, if you'll recall, on the Baltimore Hotel, because they need either a facade or a railing on the roof, if you like, to surround the air conditioning, and that goes above the height requirements, the 42 feet, but it also potentially changes the FAR based on the interpretation that Dom had. Okay? So, that took place, and they voted to support Dom's position. The fallout of that took place the next day, because Vince Robertson had requested, as you recall, we, we had a preliminary site plan approval, which he had requested in July, August, whenever it was we met. And we sort of ran through that and agreed, even though there was this railing problem, which they felt they could address, that we would start, in fact, the site plan review at this meeting. The next morning, Vince, who, who was not involved in any of this Board of Adjustment stuff that went on on the 26th, sent a letter to Ann, a copy to me, or sent a letter, I guess, to Ann and me, requesting that they not come before us for the start of the site plan review for the Baltimore Hotel, because he was going to go before the Board of Adjustment and appeal the interpretation of Dom's ruling on this, basically, that railings, et cetera, were part of the structure. Okay? So, he withdrew, okay? Just like that. We had already set up this meeting, had already set up the 1:00 starting time. He also fired off a, a, a letter the following day, basically, to just about every real estate lawyer within 25 miles, saying that he was going to appeal that this decision that Dom had, and Dom's interpretation, really was a wrong interpretation of our code. And he pointed out that, in doing so, if you followed that interpretation, half the properties in Rehoboth, both residential and commercial, would probably be non-conforming and would pose a problem.
David, just to, to clarify it, so was, what he was saying was that if you put a, a deck on the back of your house, and it's more than 32 inches off the ground, whatever requires a railing for safety purposes, that that deck is now floor area?
That's essentially...
Counts in the floor area of your house?
If it has a railing.
If it has a railing.
But it's some height that you have to put a railing up over 32 or 33. I don't know what it is, but...
So, so he's challenging that interpretation.
But I thought you said the Board of Adjustment upheld his, his determination.
He did, and he's going back to them.
Oh, he's going to try again? Or he's going to try?
Now, he's going to try.
It wasn't him, it was Lingo that...
Now, he's going to try. So, he's challenging the interpretation of the code. Okay? So, he declined to come before us for the hotel.
What did he say about ceiling height?
Don't even go there.
It's infinite. David, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't Dom's position predicated upon his interpretation deeming a railing to constitute a wall?
Yeah, in part, it, it has to do with that. A structure. Yeah, a structure. Yes, he, he deemed it as a structure.
But it's, it's, if it's a certain height, 4 feet?
Yeah, and, and it got complicated for, for that property because of the requirement by the fire inspector that the stairwell had to be enclosed. Okay, and it's, it's sort of quite complicated for that particular property, but nonetheless, it had this fallout relative to the Baltimore Hotel. So, just about the same time, Alex Papa John called, okay, and asked if he could come before us. Now, if you recall, at, at the last time we had a site plan review for the Bell Haven, they were well over height, they had a whole bunch of problems. Well, let me, let me go back. The second issue on the Board of Adjustment Meeting on the 26th was the Bell Haven. And they basically had seven requests for variances. One had to do with the, the base height, okay, which is the problem with FEMA, okay? Part, part of that, that land is below the floodplain level, okay? Part of it, not in, in the entirety. And then, the other six issues had to do with height, the embellishments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you were at that meeting, or if you watched that meeting, it was sort of interesting, because the chair... Jerry Capone sort of shot them down, to, sort of, I mean, did, from the very beginning. He basically said, you have not filled out all of the requirements for the application. Your application is incomplete relative to the FEMA thing. And he pointed out very rigidly, section, I think, 159 in the code, that deals with flooding, et cetera, et cetera, which was part of the issue, requires very rigidly that you follow 11 points, of which, they had only applied for one. And he basically said, I'm not going to let you go forward. Or if you go forward, we're sort of not even going to listen, you know, in, in a sense. So, the, the, ultimately, they argued, the lawyer argued, can't we talk about the other six and come back and talk about the FEMA issue later on? Okay? And basically, Jerry said, no. So...
Why was that? Because he thought that the other six were somehow linked to that?
He felt that the other six were linked to that, and, and that you had to solve the, the FEMA one first. Okay? So, that left the Bell Haven. Ultimately, they took a, a few minutes to recess, to discuss amongst themselves, and then, they came back and, basically, said, under advice of their attorney, meaning Jerry, in tongue-in-cheek, that they would withdraw from those proceeding, proceedings. So, the next day, all right, that, that all took place, Alex Papa John called and asked, if you have time, could we come back before you for an additional sketch... "If you have time, could we come back before you for an additional sketch review?" Okay? And my question to him was, "Do you have something new to tell us?" And he said, "Yes, we do." Okay? "We are, we, we have significantly changed our design, and we think we can meet code to a great extent." Okay? And, and so we do have something new." And I said, "Okay, you can come before us." We happened to have an opening, okay, because we had just heard from Vince that he wasn't coming. So, we said, "If, A, I will contact Ann," and she was unavailable, because I think she was having surgery that day, "but if we can get the notifications correct, okay? And if you can get your information, both to Ann, which means to the Planning Commission, and to Building and Licensing, for a review in time ahead of the meeting, then potentially we could do this." And I let Ann know. Ann's response was, "Whoa, they may bring in drawings, but I don't know if Dom has any time to review them." So, I called up Dom. Dom informed me that, in fact, they had a meeting scheduled with the Bell Haven team for the next day. It had already been scheduled. Okay? So, that solved part of the problem, okay? Part of the problem. So, I thought we were going forward, and Alex said they were gonna have a team meeting that afternoon, okay, and that he would get back to me and, and, et cetera. The next thing I knew is that he called up the next day and basically said, "We have decided, we don't want to come before you, and in fact, we've canceled the meeting with Dom." Okay? And he said, "We do have new design." He sort of told me, but not the details of which, he told me the, the, the nature of the design. He said, "We, he thought that they had completely solved the FEMA problem, and that he felt that the other things were on the way." He then...
Did he say how? Did he say how they had solved the FEMA problem?
Yeah, they raised the base foot, he told me that they raised the base level one foot. Okay? Which meant all over. Their argument before had been, if they raise it in one place, then it's a step up to get into the, the building in other places. So, I don't know how they solved it, but he indicated to me that basically they had moved everything up. Okay? So, he declined. Well, he told me that they were going to have a meeting. And this, again, goes back to the Board of Adjustment meeting, which was abrupt and, and ended. There were a lot of people in the audience that wanted to speak relative to the Bell Haven. Okay? And one of them...
It was a packed room.
It was a packed room. Yeah, it was a packed room. And, and, and a lot of people were in opposition, quite honestly.
To what? The heights?
Well, to the bulkness, to many, many issues related to it, and had questions. And, and one of the people that was, sort of had a signed petition and was going to read it, was Jan Conacy. And Jim Ellison also was, was supposed to have been there. He had written a letter relative to his impressions as an architect, if you like, relative to the design, and he was gonna make some comments. Turns out, he was sick that night. So, but none of this took place because, because of what happened at the Board of Adjustment meeting. Nobody got to talk. Okay? So, it was over before it even started. So, ultimately, Bell Haven team did meet with Jan and Jim together. Okay? And it was as a result after that meeting that Alex called me up and said, "Cancel everything." And that's where we are, folks. I don't have any more to tell you.
How does that all work? It seems to me that... I don't know what the lag time is between filing and going to the hearing, but in the, in the case of Bell Haven...
For a sketch review, it didn't matter.
Yeah. I mean, I'm talking about at the Board of Adjustment. You know, that they should kind of get earlier notice, I mean, you file this stuff, you wait for weeks and weeks and weeks, and you get in front of the board, and then you're told, "Forget it." And you're, I mean, it just takes these people forever to get through the process.
Yep, I, I agree. I'm just, don't shoot the messenger, guys. I'm just telling you what...
I'm making a comment that, I mean, that needs to be addressed somehow.
It, it was not a particularly good week, okay, or two weeks.
And I think they, they were scheduled for a continuance with the Board of Adjustment for the September meeting, and they canceled.
And they canceled that also.
Yeah.
So, so I, I really don't know what their game plan is.
They told you they'd gone back to the drawing board, right?
Well, they, they've had some meetings, they, they've had some discussions. I know from Jim Ellison, just a private conversation, that, that he did meet with, with their design team, and he sort of connected with Peter Falott. I don't know if he knew Peter ahead of time, but they knew people, they had, they had friends in the business, obviously. In fact, I think that the, Peter Falott is using one of the consulting firms that Jim used when they redid the capital, so that there was some commonality and, there was an interchange between architects, okay, in discussions.
They spoke architect.
They spoke architect. Okay? They spoke architect. So, it is where it is. Well, along with that, okay, while all of that was taking place, and pardon me for just sort of leading you on here, something else happened, which sort of had an impact, potentially, on, on that, both of those projects, if you like, and us also. So, I, let me sort of slide into that. And unfortunately, Glenn isn't here, because I... Oh, Glenn is here! Glenn did come. Come closer, Glenn. I can't see you back there. You don't wanna, you don't wanna get in the firing range. I mean, this is bizarre.
He looks so comfortable there.
So, let, let me, well, of, of the things I've, I've said so far relative to what took place at the Board of Adjustment, have you got anything to fill in on?
Factually, was, you're pretty accurate. There are a couple of things. Vince is, Vince Robertson's appeal of the David Hutt application, Vince has, it's actually, it's actually an application he had filed for the nineteen Baltimore Hotel, but it has the same question about what is gross floor area. So, it's the same question before the board. It's not actually an appeal of what David brought before the board, it's his own case. But, but the issue will be revisited by the board. So, I can offer that.
It was sort of bizarre.
Oh, it was definitely bizarre, but, but, you know, the other, the other thing I guess I can offer is that the, the, I wanna say Bell Haven, yeah, Bell Haven, the Bell Haven property, they were aware of the eleven points ahead of time. So, this wasn't something that was completely sprung on them, it was sprung on them, they were...
It's just Jerry took a very rigid, rigid interpretation.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, let me slide into the last part of this, which has, sort of has nothing to, to do, but does have something to do with Rehoboth. A neighbor of mine across the street, who happens to live in New Hampshire, she has been involved, and you've got an attachment that relates to this, but she, she is part of the National Society of Historic, well, National Society of, is it American Dames? Or something to that effect? Colonial Dames. Okay? Which sort of goes back to the Mayflower. Okay? It, it makes DAR look like a current day organization, okay? And they were involved, they are responsible in New Hampshire for a historic property that dates back to about seventeen sixty, something like that. And there was an issue that the city had approved some variances, or the Board of Adjustment had approved some variances for some building on some adjacent lots. Okay? Which the, the, the people responsible for this, the historic, for this historic property objected to. Okay? And so, they ultimately went to court, Superior Court in New Hampshire, to challenge the decision of the Board of Adjustment. Okay? And it's sort of an interesting, I mean, what took place is sort of in itself interesting, but that isn't the critical issue. And I, by the way, I have all of the court documents, which I have not shared with Glenn. I did share this blip that came out of one of the local newspapers. So, they went to court, and the Superior Court, A, overturned the Board of Adjustment, okay, ruling, and, and made a couple, and, and there was an appeal, okay, to that overturning. And they turned, and the Superior Court turned down the appeal, okay, by the original plaintiffs. Okay? And then reinforced the statement and made some very, very interesting statements, which I think apply very much not only to our Board of Adjustment, but perhaps even to us. So, I have some questions about that. I've highlighted them in, in yellow. But basically, what, and by the way, this has now gone to the Supreme Court. The appellants have now appealed the decision of the Superior Court to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. Okay? So, as Yogi Berra said, "It ain't over till it's over." But the interesting things, or what I found interesting, and I shared it with Glenn, and Glenn said, "Hey, there is case law in Delaware that is, I think you're, you indicated to me, quite similar." And, and, and the reason I shared it is because I felt that it was very generic. Basically, the Superior Court said, "A, if you're a Board of Adjustment and you're making decisions on property, don't make it based on the way you feel about the project, but stick to the law." Okay? Stick to the rigid interpretation of the law." Which is, I think, a good lesson, and something that we've sort of talked about many times. That's not in our venue, that's in, in, in the Board of Adjustment's venue, but it, it's within the city, and, and it applies to us also. Then, the, the court also said that, in general, you are better off changing the laws. You should not use the method of getting, going to a Board of Adjustment and asking for variances. Variances are not the way to satisfy problems. Change the law. Change the code. And I thought that was very interesting, because we've been saying that all along, and yet, we have not changed the code. The code still is the way it has been for quite some time, and we don't know where that's going. So, from a standpoint of the CDP, that may be one of the issues that we want to be thinking about, to reinforce in the CDP, this need for making the code right, so that we don't have these misinterpretations. Or, or we don't have this, this apparent need to go to a Board of Adjustment to always get around the way the code is written. And the city basically has to decide what the code should be, and then, as their Superior Court basically instructed the Board of Adjustment, follow the code. The, the, the last issue, okay, and, and I posed this to Glenn, because we've got site plan reviews coming up, maybe, okay, we keep trying, they, they just keep going away. But most of our site plan review is, the twenty-one questions, and we have some flexibility there, basically is to look at a site plan and its impact on its surroundings. Most of those questions relate to that. They don't relate specifically to the nature of, of, of the project in, in and of itself. It's, it's the impact on surroundings. Well, the interesting thing on this case in New Hampshire, and the thing that was the controlling factor, is whether in granting a variance, they lowered the property value of the adjacent properties. And although we've never talked about that, when we talk about site plan review, or when we talk about our evaluations in a major subdivision, those kinds of things, is that in fact, one of the criteria that we should be concerned about, where a court might in fact overturn a decision that has been made if we have negatively impacted the value of an adjacent property? And, and the reason I raise that question is, on the three hundred, or the, the Rehoboth Avenue Hotel, I forget which number it is, Rehoboth Avenue, State Street.
Rehoboth Grand.
Rehoboth Grand. One of the issues that, that the neighbors have raised already in their communications to us, in their letter correspondence to us, has been, quote, "You're lowering the value of my property by putting this big hotel there." So, I, I sort of raised that as a question, throw it out on the table. It's nothing we've ever, ever really, in my knowledge, have ever addressed or discussed, but it appears important in New Hampshire, and does it, is it important here?
So, so the reason I think that it came up in this case, and, and again, I only have the newspaper...
Yeah, I can give you all of the...
But the reason I think it came up is because the neighbors are challenging this decision, this Board of Adjustment decision, because their property values were gonna be decreased.
Yeah.
And the Board of Adjustment presumably didn't take that in to account, nor should they have, in, in, in my view. My view is that on a, on a Board of Adjustment decision, there's a clearly defined legal standard that's to be applied, and that's what the judge said here. You can't, you can't decide whether you just like the project or don't like the project when you're granting or not granting a variance, because that's basically the definition of legal error in an arbitrary decision.
But how about us?
So, it's subjective. So, in your, in your instance, I think the way the analysis would go is, you're looking at a project that, remember, shouldn't come to you until it's already been declared zoning compliant by the, by the building official. So, when you're in site plan review mode, you're really in a mode to say, "What are the health, safety, welfare?" Remember, those are the zoning issues. What are the health, safety, welfare concerns that you can identify based upon the project that's been put in front of you? And can you attach, then, attach reasonable conditions that will address those concerns? So, the real question is, is the diminishment of neighboring property values a health, welfare, or safety concern that you should, that you should be concerned about in addressing? And I would probably argue that the welfare of the community, sometimes, especially in a resort community, is driven by, in some respect, property values. So, I think you could take it into consideration on a site plan review. I'm not sure what form of a condition would be appropriate to address that welfare of the community concern, but I think it's something that you could be mindful of when you're considering a site plan review. I don't think, probably, I'd have to really think about this, but, but I think that it's unlikely that you could deny a site plan that was zoning compliant based upon the diminishment of neighboring property values. I think you could attach a condition somehow to maybe address those, to address that concern, but I'm not sure what that condition would be.
Is there any case law that we know of, or should we...
Nothing that I know of off the, off the top of my head. There may be case law out there. I wouldn't be surprised if there's something that talks about it. Probably, that maybe even like Rathaus, it's a treatise on American zoning law that would probably address it in some respect, which I'd be happy to...
No, well, I mean, for instance, in, in, in the question that, well, that you brought before us, that we debated, that we sent back a, that came from the commissioners, was the question of rezoning that piece of property. Okay? And in, we, our recommendation, I think it was Rick's motion, that basically said, "You ought to hold off on that right now, but for other reasons." Okay? There was a reason to standing, et cetera. But ultimately, when you talk about that, it, it, that piece of property that's currently zoned, the portion of it that's consoined R1, you have to take a look and say, "Okay, what if it remained R1?" Okay? And it was... Okay, and it was, and, and it remained like the houses next to it and the houses in back of it, et cetera. So I think ultimately, you get into the question in something like that.
In a rezoning, you certainly do because one of the factors when you're considering rezoning is the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So you don't want to do something that's substantially different than the character of the surrounding neighborhood.
It, it, there is just something in this particular case that made me.
Well, David, I think you, you see that in almost every sing, any case I've ever seen. It always comes down to property value. It might be shrouded in other issues, but it's property value. And, and, you know, the type of things you hear from neighbors, or noise, or smells, or blocking light, or whatever they might be, they all impact property value. And some of it is, you know, I just don't want the noise next door. Some of it is, I don't want my potential buyer to be turned off by the noise next door and, and lower, you know, offer me a lower price. So I think it, it's a very important question because I see it so much and many times I feel like to say, just tell the truth. It's the property value that you're concerned, it's not the rats, it's not the smell, it's not the traffic, it's not the height, it's, you're worried about your property value, which is, is a legitimate concern. But it, it comes across many different ways, but that's usually what it boils down to.
So the question is, is it in our site plan review process now to look at that? Is it, is it one of, is it couched within those 21 items? I don't remember them right off the bat.
No, no, and that's the reason I raised the question. It, it, it's couched in, in whether what you're building fits in with the neighborhood and, you know, and, and that's the way it comes, it comes out. But what I, what I worry about is making a decision along the way with the tools that we've got, and then all of a sudden, a challenge like this. You know, where the court, very clearly, in this case.
Yeah, and one of the classic examples is affordable housing, where people oppose affordable housing and they say it's because of the traffic, or the noise, or the this, or the that. And it's this, they're worried that having affordable housing next door is going to diminish their property values. Is what they're really worried about.
I, I, I think that perhaps, I agree with Lee, that just tell the truth. You know, and, and I do think it comes down to property values in many cases. But I, I think that people do couch it in terms of health and safety issues because that's a lot easier and those are things that can be addressed to some degree by conditions that can be placed on the property. But when they start arguing that it's their property value they're concerned about, then it raises property rights issues. You know, are they seeking to deprive the property owner seeking to do something of their right to use their property as it's zoned? And so, you know, it's a, it's a quandary. But I, I would have some difficulty if our decision were to protect my home value and deprive the property next door that might be zoned commercial from being able to engage in a commercial enterprise.
Well, there's, no, there's clearly, there's parameters, I mean, and there's.
The number 18, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying clearly there's parameters and there's cases where you're like, it may have impacted your property value, but it's always been zoned commercial and you should have thought of that when you bought it, you know, kind of thing. It's, it's not really impact, it's always, that threat has always been there. So it's not really impacting your values, but.
The number 18 on the list is impact on nearby properties or the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, but it, but it doesn't say specifically.
It doesn't say property value.
It doesn't say value.
It doesn't say green dollars.
Okay.
I just want to interject something. In, in my former life as an auditor for the Maryland Department of Transportation, I used to do these audits of then the State Highway Administration when they would do eminent domain for building a road or something like that. So they would take, you know, the front end of somebody's property and, you know, suddenly there's a highway there that, or they maybe there was a highway, but now it's a wider highway or whatever. But the process that they went through, which, when you were saying like, how do you go about doing this? I mean, this is how the appraisal, the appraisals were done, was basically to assess the property as it, as is, you know, with, with comparables and all that kind of stuff. You come up with like, let's say, a square foot, you know, dollar per square foot of what gets taken. But then, so it's not just a matter of taking that, but then in order to assess what the, what the take is, is to envision what the as-built is going to be with suddenly the road being three feet from your front door and, you know, all the, all the, all the different changes. And then making that, that assessment based on comparables and so forth. So it doesn't really boil down to like, well, you know, as, you know, it's, it's just so much per square foot. It's like that differential between, you know, this serene value that you had and then suddenly this very disrupted value. So, and all I'm saying is, all that was steeped in very elaborate and written, you know, the, the, the manner in which these appraisals were done. And I'm sure there's this association of certified appraisers and all that kind of stuff. But I'm just thinking, if, if this is something that we take on, I think it's going to have to really, you're going to have to come up with some kind of quantifiable way to assess what that, you know, you say was going to reduce my property values. Well, in what way and how do you go about doing that? And I think you're going to, it's going to be a can of worms. So I think there probably are procedures that you could do in order to do that, so.
Yeah, and it's going to affect almost every project that comes in front of us. Some clear space is a good example.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I think it's different when you're looking at a buy right site plan approval versus a rezoning. There, you know, and, and you could go around forever and ever and ever on a site plan of, well, this wall, you know, it could be four feet away from, instead of six feet or two feet, and that's, is that going to impact your value more or less? But when somebody's acting to go from R1 to C3 or something, that's a lot different than just coming before us with a site plan that's a buy right plan. And, and, you know, the property owner is entitled to do it. It's just a matter of, of, you know, massaging it to get it right, yeah.
I throw it out just for thinking purposes. I mean, it was, it was an interesting case. And by the way, if anybody really wants to look at the documents, I have all of the court documents. They're, they're really interesting to read, so.
Could you send them to me?
Yeah, 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 I can send them to you. Either send them to you or make them available on, on Dropbox or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if anybody wants to look at them, because they're pretty extensive, just send me a note.
Would the public want, if you want to put up on the city?
I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, if someone was interested.
Send me, well, I know Rick, if anybody else wants to see them, just let me know. Glenn, if you want to see them, I'll, I'll be happy to make them available to you. Yeah, they're just, as I said, it's, it's now, they thought everything was settled, everybody felt good, and then all of a sudden, it went to Supreme Court, so it's, it ain't over yet. Never is. Okay, moving on.
David, before, before you move on, I, I wanted to say something about our earlier topic. The, for the CDP, for the Bell Haven and the, the free board issue. One of the things I want to see us do in, in the updated CDP is to make sure that we're keeping current with new developments and new standards. And an example I'll give is a few meetings back, we had a sidebar discussion when Dom was here about the building code and the new building code and sprinklers, which I feel is a really important health, life, safety issue, particularly in our town, because so many people come from jurisdictions where residential sprinkling requirements are already there and they assume that it's universal.
Yeah.
And I was very surprised that we were not where we needed to be in terms of the addition, so.
I was surprised also, quite honestly.
I want us to think about, you know, what we can say to keep us current with things like that, which, which are really, that's just not like a minor change. That's a really big development. And, but the other one is, I, I may, I may be looking at this through a different kind of lens, but the whole free board issue with the Bell Haven, to me, I think it's worth at least a discuss, discussion that if the redevelopment on the boardwalk is going to be at a different height, do we have a whole infrastructure issue about where the boardwalk should be in terms of height? And I say this because, you know, I've been, I've attended some other commissioner discussions where there's, there's a ton of time spent on where an antenna is going to be placed.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, the simplicity and the beauty and, you know, the things that we've done to make sure that things stay the way they are. But if we have a really serious flooding issue and large parts of the boardwalk are going to be affected by buildings at a different height, surely that seems worthy of some discussion in our long-term planning. And I, I want to put that forward because I, I'm not sure that that's, the Bell Haven owns that problem 100%.
Agreed. Well, by, by the way, the first part of that, we did go back to the Conservancy. Because as was pointed out in, in that discussion, their criteria is, is the 5,000 square feet currently. What apparently is being considered, you know more, is whether for Rehoboth, 2,500 square feet of disturbed land would qualify you for examination. Okay, and so we asked the Conservancy.
Conservation District.
Conservation District. Do you even know how to handle that? If we came back at you, you're all geared up to, to deal with 5,000 square foot issues. If we came back and said, we've got a 2,500 square foot property, what are you going to do for us?
And she, well, she said, she wanted, she said that she'd very much like to be involved.
Yeah. But it's not clear that they're even ready to do that, so.
So the discussion now is if, if we move forward with an ordinance, which, which I'm currently in the, in the process of drafting one, it'll still be a 2,500 square foot trailer line, but it'll be subjecting the developer owner to review by city staff under the Sussex Conservation District's regs. So we'll reference their regs, say you have to comply with the Sussex Conservation District's regs, but the oversight will be done by our city staff.
Yeah, the, the problem we had is though, is if you look at the regs, are they adaptable to the 2,500 square feet?
Right. That's the issue I'm dealing with right now.
And that's really, the question that we raised is because our concern was that they might, their regulations might not even be able to handle the 2,500 square feet.
Right, that's a little bit of what I'm wrestling with.
And, and I think you, you can't just say it's going to be 2,500 square feet. You got to make sure that the regulations can handle it.
Right.
So, okay. Not a good week. It's getting worse. Let's talk about the nominating planning commission officers. That's something Rick asked to be put on. I went back and, let me just give you a little background and we'll open it up for discussion. I went back and, and looked and see what we've done in the past. I actually asked PAL, and then I came across, across this document. Historically, over my years that I've served here, the problem has always been when we got to the point of deciding about officers. First of all, state law requires that we have two officers, a, a chair and a secretary. Okay, our, our bylaws or procedures say we're going to have three. We're going to have a vice chair for the obvious reason of taking over when the chair isn't here. Historically, the problem has been to get enough volunteers. And so one of the things that PAL used to do, and it was probably done before him, was to send out this kind of, of survey that's, that's enclosed. And I basically did the same thing for a couple of years. And then I asked, and then I, I changed it a little bit and I picked on somebody that I knew did not want to be an officer or serve as an officer. And I said, okay, you go and ask the questions, but perhaps the better way of doing it is, is to in fact, have the survey or something like this. Historically, the problem has been getting people to volunteer. Of the two positions, okay, let me just give you my viewpoint. There's a lot of work, the chair has a, a fair amount of work to do. It looks like the secretary doesn't have all that much to do ordinarily. Except for one thing that hasn't come up, okay? If you look at our code, and, and it, I don't know why the site plan review wasn't written that way, but if you look at our code relative to a major subdivision, the secretary has an awful lot to do. Because the secretary is charged with working with the chief building inspector to do all the communication between the applicant, building and licensing, and the planning commission. And basically is the one that is sort of the, the gatekeeper for saying whether it's ready to come before us. Okay, so there's an awful lot of work that the secretary does if you do a major subdivision. And Tim Speeds, if anybody remembers Tim or knows Tim, ask him because he was involved in that.
Oh, Grove.
With Oak Grove, and it really wore him down. It may be the reason why when the site plan review ordinance was written, it was written out of there. Harvey was involved in that. I don't know if Tim was involved at that time. You were involved.
I was, yeah.
But, but, and I don't know what the discussions were, but for whatever reason, that line of communication didn't exist in the site plan review. Maybe it should, okay, because we've had some problems. But I, I just want to point out that under that particular condition, the secretary has an awful lot of work to do. Open it up. You're the one that raised the question.
Yeah, I, you know, sort of pointed out last year when, when we were in the process of electing officers that I felt the process should be, should be looked at and reconsidered. And I think we were in general agreement that that was an appropriate thing to do, to, to look at it. My, my, my basic, you know, intent here is that we establish a process that is equitable, that's fair, and that's transparent. Personally, I believe that everybody who's appointed to the planning commission, you know, is, is qualified to serve in any one of these positions and should have the opportunity to put their name forward and be considered if they want to, want to hold one of those positions. I hadn't seen this before, but, you know, this goes in that direction. You know, it leaves it up to the individuals to say, you know, hey, I'd like to be chair or I'd like to be vice chair or secretary. And I think that's appropriate. And then allow those individuals who are willing to serve in a position to state their case, as David gave Susan and I the opportunity to do last year with respect to the vice chair, and then let the, the commission decide. I mean, we're a little bit unique and I, 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 it never ceases to amaze me how inconsistent state statutes are, for example. You know, with respect to the Board of Adjustment, it's the mayor who appoints the chair by state law. And then the, the Board of Adjustment selects its other officers. I had a communication with Linda Kaufman the other day because I was curious to know, you know, just how the process worked there. And she said, of course, with a five-person board, it's been informal. And she's vice chair, and when Tom Evans resigned, she was asked if she wanted to take over and she declined. And so only one person was willing to take over. And, you know, that may very well be the case. It just seems to me as though a nominating committee does not make a lot of sense. And certainly a nominating committee of one, as I said last year, is not a committee. So I, I like the idea in concept that's been presented here by David of allowing, you know, the members of the commission to put forth their names for any or all positions. And then let us decide based on, you know, their qualifications and their reasons for seeking those positions, how we want to vote. I think that's fair, it's equitable, and I think it's transparent, not only to the members of the commission, but also to the public. And I'm a big, big proponent of transparency. In, in thinking about this issue, well, let me go back to, to a nominating committee. The only purpose I see a nominating committee serving, and if we have one, I would recommend if we're a nine-person commission, that it be three members of the commission selected by lot, not appointed by anybody, but basically names in a hat and drawn out. And, you know, I think that's fair. Is if no one wants to serve in a particular position, then, then I think, I mean, we are faced with a dilemma at that point. You can't force somebody to serve. You can't force somebody to serve. Even a nominating committee might have difficulty convincing someone to, but, you know, perhaps under those circumstances, you know, a nominating committee of three might be able to prevail upon somebody to take a position. And I think it would be good to have that safety valve in place in case it were needed. So that's sort of my recommendation or suggestion as to how to move forward on that. The other thing, you know, as I began to look at this a little more in depth, maybe I have some questions for our city solicitor, I came across some, some things in the bylaws that I think we need to address. And particularly this year, we may be confronted with an issue in terms of timing as to when new members of the commission will be seated on the planning commission. From what I can tell reading the tea leaves, we may not have, for example, a replacement for Susan until November. And I don't think that any new planning commissioner should be deprived of the opportunity to have input into our process. Also concerned that for continuity purposes, after September 20th, Susan, I don't think you, you're serving on the planning commission anymore. So, so we're losing a vice chair. There's nothing in the bylaws that, you know, tells us how to fill a vacancy in an officer position, only annual elections. But I certainly think for continuity purposes, someone ought to be filling that, that position in the interim even. The other problem that I found in the bylaws is that, and Glenn, maybe you can interpret differently around this, but I am concerned about the fact that the bylaws require us to elect our officers after the new appointments and reappointments are made by the mayor and the new members join the commission, but in no case later than its regular November meeting. I don't understand that, and I'd like somebody to explain to me how, for example, that could work this year, given the fact that we may not have, you know, everyone appointed until November. And, and that November is not consistent with the code provision. There's no, no, you know, set deadline in our code, nor is there any set deadline in the chapter 22 that empowers and authorizes a planning commission. So I'm wondering whether or not we should think about amending that. And there is provision for amendment, and conceivably, we could do this at the next meeting because section 24 of our bylaws say that they can be amended at any meeting of the planning commission, et cetera, et cetera, provided the notice of said proposed amendment is given to each member of the planning commission in writing at least two weeks prior to said meeting. I just, I think there ought to be more flexibility than having that November, you know, flat deadline unless I'm not reading this correctly.
Can I comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you. It's been raised before, okay? And in fact, one year we had to, because the mayor did not appoint until the October meeting, or in fact, until the November meeting, we had to go into December. So we knew it was, that particular point was a problem. So we perhaps ought to have it worded at the, at the meeting immediately following the appointment, something to that effect. We really have no control. And what is not said there is that historically, members of the planning commission will continue to serve until their, their, their position is filled, or either reappointed or not appointed.
Right, which is typical.
Which is typical.
Directors and things of that nature.
Which is typical.
Except for me, because I have no.
So I, I think we should. I mean, I do think that we should try to clean up our bylaws. And I also wanted to raise a question because I also went back to the code provisions. And the code at section 51-3 refers to ex officio members of the planning commission.
Saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, it raised two questions for me, well, more than two questions, probably three or four, actually.
And it says one more thing.
Yeah.
Ex officio, and has the same voting rights.
Yes, yes. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily say voting rights, but powers, as we do.
Powers, it has, has the same power.
And so the mayor, the city manager, and the members of the zoning commission. Now, we have nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Now, there's, there's a, there's a code, there's a statutory provision that requires communities to have a zoning commission of not less than three, of three people, no two of whom can be of the same party. Suddenly, it's politicized. But I find nothing in our code or in our government structure that is a zoning commission. So I don't know who these people are who are entitled to be ex officio members with the powers that we have, which presumably would include voting. And so if the zoning commission means the board of commissioners, although the statute provides that it's the legislative body of the city that appoints the zoning commissioners, what, what does this code provision tell us about what constitutes our membership? I mean, could we end up being a planning commission of 18 with 18 voting members?
State Code limited.
State limits it between five and nine.
It's the regular members.
But that's the regular members. That doesn't say anything about ex officio members.
Right, but I, but I would argue that the state provision saying five to nine means that you can't have more than nine voting members. So this saying, this provision that says all powers, I think that if we had to get into a fight about it in court, that a judge would eventually say there are not 10 voting members of this planning commission, or 11, or 12, or 13, there's nine.
I found the same thing, and I, it disturbed me when I saw it.
I mean, I, this goes to the bigger point that many of us have, have mentioned about, you know, the need for a complete review of the city's code provisions, not just with respect to the planning commission, but something like this, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
But I'm sure it's an old provision because typically what happened is the zoning commissions were set up before there was zoning in a community. So the zoning commission would lay out the initial zoning of the community, then oftentimes the zoning commission transitioned into the planning commission. So you all might have been the zoning commission at one, at one time.
You know, Debbie calls us PZ all the time, Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what she refers to us as. And I, isn't that the name of some of them in some communities?
Yeah, oh, in some cities, it is.
Yeah, so.
But, but the, chapter 22 of the Delaware code, though, provides, you know, there's, there's a section on, you know, planning commissions, there's a section on board of adjustments, there's a section on zoning commission.
Right, yeah.
And all of those things. So the state code doesn't treat them as the planning commission and the zoning commission as one and the same.
That's right.
Could we ask, Glenn, could we ask you to just take a look at that to see if it needs some clarification?
Well, you know, I, I can tell you here and now, but I would, I would rather that it says something other than all the powers of regular members of the planning commission because I don't think the state code would permit any of these ex officio members to have all the powers that you have. I don't, I don't think they would be entitled to a vote if a judge took a look at this provision. So I would write that out of this.
Okay. Let me, let me step back. Are you, can I make a comment relative? It was the intent, it may not have worked that way, but last year, when we had a nominate, quote, a nominating person, it was in the intent that they would follow this process of surveying. It may not have worked that way, or it may not have appeared that way, but it should have been that way. Okay? So I would propose, it seems that this is not a bad way of doing it. And I'd, I'd be willing to, to continue with this.
Doris has a question.
Yeah.
You know, I, I agree with what Rick was saying. It seemed, a lot of these things are very complicated. This, to me, sounds very easy.
Yeah.
It, it sounds like it's something we can do, you know, decide today. This format seems fine, and it seems to me if we each had one of these papers and we came into the meeting, and those who wanted, you know, put their names in, it can be very open, you know, I'm interested in, and then we, we have a slate right there and vote.
Yeah, I, I think that perhaps there ought to be some, maybe, maybe it should be incorporated into our bylaws or policy, or separate policies and procedures. But I, I think it would be helpful if, you know, we knew when the annual election were going to take place, and that if you wanted to serve in one of these positions, that within a certain period of time prior to that date, you would submit the form, you know, either to the then-chairman or to Ann. And, you know, Ann maybe is a good person to, to take it and then notify everybody.
It could be sent out with our.
Sent out in advance of the election so that people would know.
Well, you get that in a lot of, a lot of places. You know, these are people who are willing to serve.
And that, that would give, if we decide to also still have a nominating committee, say of three, you know, that if there's, no one who signs up for Bunky's job because they know site plans are coming.
That was the reason why I took it.
You wanted the challenge.
Well, so are you saying that the nominating committee would be in, if, only if this part of the process didn't work, or the nominating committee would take the results of this and work with them? No, the former?
The former, yeah.
Okay.
If needed. It can be a very easy process and done right here, right? I mean, the, okay.
Should we incorporate this kind of list, not with the bottom stuff, but basically this, into our procedures? Why not?
I mean, directly into the bylaws?
Yeah.
I don't know if I'd put the exact form in there, but at least maybe a description of how the process would work, that there will be a form that has.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Yeah.
And should we be thinking about amending the bylaws at our next meeting to clean up this language with respect to November? And also maybe a process for ensuring continuity, that there's a, a way to, you know, have someone, at least on a temporary basis, you know, replace.
Well, that's really up to the mayor, quite honestly.
No.
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. I'm talking about election of officer.
Oh, oh, the officer.
I'm talking about filling a vacancy.
Oh, oh, vacancy of an officer, oh, yeah.
Because it's silent in our bylaws.
Yeah, that, that should be in the bylaws, replacing an officer.
Right, yeah, I would think a majority of the commission should be able.
The person is up to the mayor.
Yeah, to, right.
Yeah.
To, to fill a position until the next annual election of officers, I would think.
Well, I think both those items. Do you want to take a cut at how you would do it, and I'll take a look, and if you're agreeable to putting it on the agenda next time?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so I'll, I'll wait for something from you.
Basically, the, the, I don't think we ever contemplated having to go beyond the November date. What has happened is we've had mayors that have not appointed, have not made appointments, you know, and.
Yeah, and I, and I just think it's also not the norm that someone from the planning commission is going to be leaving because they're going out to board commissioners, which further.
Well, it's happened before.
It, yeah.
It's happened before.
Yeah, it has, but it's not a regular occurrence.
Okay.
But, oh, I'm saying, in addition to that, people can just resign for.
Oh, true, that's, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, that could be, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, moving on. How about telling us about the garage task force? Mr. Perry?
Boy. Well, no, this, this, this can be fairly simple, I think. You know, the parking garage task force continues to meet. We've been meeting pretty much on a monthly basis. And prior to our last meeting in, there was a decision made that we should have a group of the members of the task force put together a draft RFP. And we felt we were at the point where, you know, we needed to get information from experts in the parking garage industry. And there was a sense that an RFP was perhaps the way to go. That group came back to us after meeting and recommended that an RFP was premature at this point in time because no one on the parking garage task force, I believe, has made up their mind one way or the other, whether or not a parking garage, you know, is needed, whether it should be built, where it should be built, if it, if it is built. You know, we're still in the information gathering phase. And to that end, what the smaller group presented to us were pros and cons that they, you know, sort of put together from all of the discussions we've been having. One of the most recent things that came to light were concerns about the infrastructure under the existing parking lot. And so we did get, you know, from, you know, the head of public works and from the individual who was responsible for overseeing the project from the outside, information about what infrastructure was actually put under the parking lot. And it does involve, you know, a, if it were disrupted, it, it could potentially disrupt communications in city hall. It could also disrupt the 9/11 function. So those are all things that needed to be considered, which initially we weren't aware of the extent of the infrastructure that had been placed under the parking lot. I think it, in the final analysis, a conclusion was reached that it would still be possible to move forward and deal with those infrastructure issues. And there was a meeting, I believe, between the city manager and Linda Kaufman, I believe, with Colonial, who's the party that had submitted a proposal to the city, to make them aware of the fact that there were these infrastructure issues under the parking lot, you know, and did they feel they could still move forward and deal with those issues? And I think the conclusion was, was that, you know, yeah, okay, you know, I'm glad that we're aware of this, and yes, we believe that we can deal with those issues. But the bottom line was that we concluded that the RFP was not appropriate at this point in time, but rather a request for information. And so at the last board of commissioners workshop, there was a presentation made to the commissioners recommending that if the commissioners believed it was appropriate, given, you know, the pros and cons, with the understanding that no decision has been made one way or the other, that we be authorized to put together a request for information and go out with that. And the consensus of the board of commissioners at that workshop meeting was that that made sense. And so that's where we are.
Could I ask you? As I recall, there was a study done several years ago, Rick, is that not right?
About 10 years ago.
Was it 10 years? Has that been looked at at all, whatever, or is it completely out of date at this point?
Well, I think, I can't say that it has been formally looked at. It has been discussed. Linda Kaufman, who is on, on the, on the working group, was part of that 10 years ago, and so she's very familiar with it. I think, you know, bottom line, Linda's view is that it's not terribly relevant anymore. And, and one, one of the, one of the major issues and that has to probably be addressed is, this is not just a question of, you know, do we need a parking garage? There are all kinds of sub-issues with respect to parking, and, you know, are you going to eliminate some other parking spaces, you know, for safety reasons, for example, near intersections and things? And so how many parking spaces do we really need? So there's a whole analysis that yet needs to go into that. And interestingly enough, and although he did not send it to the planning commission, Mark Bechtel submitted an email just the morning of the commissioners workshop meeting, in which, you know, he made some suggestions, you know, that if you're going to consider a parking garage, should you be considering all these other parking-related issues? For example, doing away with parking down near the bandstand and making that, you know, more of a parking-free zone, and therefore, do you, does that necessitate having the parking garage? Because there's something like, he claims 122 parking spaces down in that area. You know, there's the issue of how much is the existing parking lot here at city hall utilized, other than on weekends in, you know, the 10 to 12-week, you know, high season period? You know, there's the issue of, you know, whether or not parking spaces are too close to intersections so that, you know, the view for both cars and pedestrians. that, you know, the view for both cars and pedestrians, you know, is being inhibited. For example, if you look at the intersection at Baltimore and First, that's a nightmare because you cannot, if you're coming off of Baltimore, either to cross First, to continue onto Baltimore toward the ocean, or vice versa, or wanting to make particularly a left-hand turn off of Baltimore, or even a right-hand turn, you can't see if there's a car coming down First Avenue towards Baltimore because the car, the first car parking space is so close to the intersection. I mean, you have to sort of nose your way out and hope you're not going to get hit. So, you know, there are a lot of parking issues that need to be addressed. The other thing that the working group is very cognizant of is, you know, traffic and a traffic study because we've discussed, you know, what are the issues depending upon the ingress and egress to the parking garage if it were put, you know, where the existing parking lot is? What does that do to traffic congestion? What does it do to, you know, safety issues with respect to people coming in and out of the parking garage and people, you know, walking in on a busy sidewalk walk on Rehoboth Avenue? And wayfinding is another issue. And I know there's a wayfinding, you know, process being undertaken now, but, you know, is that going to solve the parking problem as it's being contemplated now? Or would that have to be significantly enhanced, you know, if we had a parking garage, you know, and signs in the entrance, two entrances of the city saying X number of parking spaces on Level 2 of the parking garage or whatever, and how to get there? So, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. So, the intent is to continue the information-seeking process.
Well, Rick, it's because, you said a lot of that at the last meeting, and you talked about it being, you know, that it should be part of the CDP, and I loved what you said at the last meeting. So, as a result of that, I spoke up at the workshop Monday. The audio on that...
The audio wasn't working. I could not hear you because I was listening, couldn't hear it, couldn't...
If you turn it up, if you turn your volume to maximum, because I went back and tried to listen to some of the stuff I had said, and if I turned my computer all the way up to maximum, I could make it out. But at any rate, well, I actually suggested that the whole task force kind of be turned over to the Planning Commission, not disbanded, but that the task force kind of report into the Planning Commission so that it could be part of the CDP process. And, you know, frankly, I thought that was, you know, a long shot. And so, you know, they did, they went ahead with approving by consensus the RFI, but what we got out of it was that Paul suggested that we name two more, we have two more members of the Planning Commission on the task force so that there's, because the other issue I raised was that there's, there's four, soon to be anyway, four commissioners on the task force, and then the task force goes to the commissioners to ask for approval, and they're going to a body whose quorum is already on the, you know, so. So, for sort of balance, he was suggesting that we, you know, we look at having three planning commissioners on there, and that seemed...
And I think that meant with general, you know, approval by the Board of Commissioners. I know, I think it was Steve Sheffer, in particular, who said, you know, he'd be happy to have two more representatives from the Planning Commission. So, you ought to be thinking about volunteerings.
Add it to that list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, I mean, that's pretty much where we are. And, you know, I guess it raises another governance question, and I don't know, should we, there's an awful lot that the Planning Commission is doing. And, you know, this caught my eye, too, in our bylaws. I mean, it says that the chairperson shall be an ex officio, more ex officios around here, member of all committees with voice but no vote. Yet, there's nothing in our bylaws that says anything about how you authorize committees or form them. And, you know, Jeff and I had talked briefly about, you know, the workload of the commission and, you know, that it shouldn't all be on one person, or even just two persons. And should we be, you know, looking at a commission structure where, you know, less than a majority of commissioners serve on subcommittees that are specifically charged with, for example, specific areas of the CDP, like environment? And, you know, we are having these chirets and all, and we're taking in all this information, but how can we, as a nine-member commission, synthesize all that? And, you know, shouldn't we think about, you know, maybe some special committees comprised of, say, three members of the Planning Commission?
It's been done before.
Responsible for specific topic areas, and then report back to the full Planning Commission.
That was done, that was how site plan review was written, right? It was a sub, sort of a subcommittee of the Planning Commission?
And it's not just the CDP. I mean, there's, there are a lot of other issues. I mean, there, this whole code issue is a major undertaking. I know there's a Law and Oversight Committee that the mayor has, but, you know, the zoning code and everything is something that ought to be, you know, the Planning Commission should be looking at that and making recommendations. I'm hearing crickets. I don't know.
No, actually, I think the code is one of the specific things that Law and Oversight Committees would be looking at.
Yeah, it is, but the Planning Commission doesn't have any involvement in that.
Absolutely.
Only thing to keep in mind is if, you know, even if it's a three-member body, if it's a committee, you're still subject to the Freedom of Information Act, and you'd have to post agendas and meet in public to address...
Not if it's a subgroup of the Planning Commission, do they? Because it's less than a quorum.
Doesn't matter.
Nope, that's the problem.
If it's a committee, so let me bring it up and read it to you.
So, it has to be noticed, it has to be, you know, I mean, we explored that before, and it gets complicated.
It's amazing what a...
So, three can talk, but you can't be an official committee.
If you're, I'll read it, let me find, but if you're charged with going and doing some research or looking into something and bringing it back to this body and making recommendations, it's certainly...
You can do that.
No, if you're charged with doing it...
Charged with something.
Oh, if you're charged with doing it.
If Eric says, you know, "I'd like the two of you to go look at this and bring back some ideas to the Planning Commission," that simple act is creating a committee under the Freedom of Information Act that requires you to be open.
Which then has to be...
You can say to Rick, "Rick, I'd like you to go take a look at this. And if you'd like to consult with one or two of the other members, you can do that." At that point, he's not, he's a body of one, so he doesn't have to notice meetings, and he can consult with a member or two of the Planning Commission on his own terms. But once you appoint even two, it's a subcommittee that requires...
Is there any way to distinguish, like, between the actions of this committee and a working group function? Like, the fact that the nature of what you're going to be doing is effectively research, and you're not making any decisions, and you're not, you're not inviting public comment or any of that kind of stuff?
Here's the definition of public body. So, a public body means, under the state code, unless specifically excluded, any regulatory, administrative, advisory, executive, appointive, or legislative body of the state, and remember, we're all political subdivisions of the state, or any political subdivision of the state, including but not limited to any board, bureau, commission, department, agency, committee, ad hoc committee, special committee, temporary committee, advisory board and committee, subcommittee, legislative committee, association, group, panel, council, or any other entity or body established by an act of the General Assembly of the state, or established by any body established by the General Assembly of the state, which you are, or appointed by any body or public official of the state, or otherwise empowered by any state government entity, which, and here's the triggering thing, is supported in whole or part by any public fund, so if you, if money is supporting you, or expends or disperses any public funds, including grants, gifts, or other similar dispersals or distributions, and here's the interesting one that gets to you every time, or is impliedly or specifically charged by any other public official body or agency to advise or make reports, investigations, or recommendations. So, when you say to two, "Go investigate this and report back," you're a public body.
You're screwed.
Okay, so do we, a couple of questions. Is a nominating committee of more than one a public body?
A nominating committee of more than one is a public body. Yes. Yes.
We have to rethink that. And so, is there a problem with having more than one representative, for example, on the Parking Garage Working Group?
Right. No, because the Parking, that Working Group isn't of itself doing its own business, and they're noticing their meetings. So, you don't have to notice a meeting of the Planning Commission or a subcommittee of the Planning Commission when you're part of that group that's already doing its work. But when we have joint meetings between the Planning Commission and the city commissioners, for example, we notice both bodies.
But if you had a quorum of people, you'd have a problem?
I generally take the technical approach on that, and if there's a quorum of the Planning Commission participating in some other body's meeting, I generally will ask Ann to notice it as Planning Commission as well.
Notice it, yeah.
I think that's a hyper-technical approach. Most don't do that.
Is there a problem with what Rick just did with regard to the parking garage? So, he's a member of that committee. It's properly noticed. He brought back the information to this committee as a subject matter expert. What if he were additionally charged with making some notes or writing up some language, or paying particular attention to something that might eventually be in the code or the CDP or something? He is a party of one. It sounds like it's noticed all the way through. So, he could do that.
He could, right, without any additional noticing or anything, right?
And if he did a draft of something and asked two or three of us to take a look at it and return it to him, are we still okay?
Still okay. Yeah. It's not until the body appoints you to, so it's not until the body says, "Rick's going to do this. Now, I'd like Paul and Jeff to work with him to bring something back to us." Once that happens, that's the formation of a subcommittee.
Maybe we should make a recommendation to our elected officials, state-elected officials, that they look at this statute.
Oh, it's an interesting statute, but you know, they carve themselves, and I shouldn't be saying this is probably being watched, but they carve themselves out of it. You know, there's, your emails, for example, are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So, if somebody comes in and says, "I'd like to see all the emails that Rick Perry wrote concerning the Clear Space Proposal," you'd have to turn them over. The General Assembly doesn't have to do that. They've written themselves out, specifically exempted themselves, and their reasoning is that they say it would chill the conversation with their constituents. And I've always thought, if it chills the conversation with your constituents, why wouldn't it chill the conversation with local government's constituents?
Exactly, yeah. Well, they've taken a note from Washington, I guess.
We will do all things with a body of one, unfortunately. You got anything to tell us?
I think we, really, we covered most of what I would have covered upfront, when we talked about what has happened with Bell Haven and what's happened with the property on Rehoboth Avenue.
Could I ask you, what happened with Rehoboth State Street? You came to us, we made a recommendation, we filed a report, it never even got opened?
Right, right.
And nothing happened?
Well, I think something will happen. I think, I recall an email from David Hutter, or somehow I had a communication with him, that he basically asked me the same question. So, does my application just go poof? And he said he'd probably write something to the commissioners, asking that they take it up in one respect or another.
Right.
Well, we did. I mean, we...
You did.
We did, yeah. But when it came to giving reports, the mayor never asked for anything from the Planning Commission.
Right.
And then it has never appeared on any agenda thereafter.
Right. So, David Hutt's question was, is something going to happen?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, why did we do this?
Right. So, I think he's going to write to the commission, the Board of Commissioners, and ask them to do something, take it up, either dispense with it...
Okay, so then the question becomes, if that becomes a vote of the commissioners...
He's concerned now because she's going to be there.
No, I'm just wondering if I can vote on it because I voted on it here.
Probably not.
Probably not. I mean, you have, yeah, I mean, you've already judged the application at once, and yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, if that came up for discussion on the commissioners, I would just recuse myself from both of the discussion and the vote.
Right, right.
Good enough. Yeah, that did seem like a loop that was not closed before.
Yeah. My preference, by the way, is to make it cleaner, is I think in the future, when these kinds of issues come up at the commissioners' meeting, I would rather see it come to us as a resolution. Please, Planning Commission, we're asking you to do this, 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 and this, rather than this informal request that came via the solicitor. Because I'm never quite sure that when we give the reply, you know, what's happening to it.
Right.
And it's happened before to us, so it's...
Yeah, the last one was an administrative, you know, inadvertent, didn't get it moving fast enough, and that's why it went that way. It wasn't the traditional way, and should not be the way it's handled going forward. Because the commissioners have, frankly, the commissioners may not have referred it down to you. If they had an opportunity to look at it, they may have come to the same conclusion you did and decided it wasn't ripe to be considered yet.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, one personal thing from me, scheduling thing. The regular October meeting, I will not be here. And...
You have to go to that wedding?
I do. I'll be out of the country. And I really would like to be present for the...
The data reveal.
The data reveal. And because it's going to be a joint meeting, you know...
So, you'd like a different date?
Well, that's too much of an ask, but if another date is preferable to the October meeting, that would be wonderful from my perspective.
What date? When will you be back?
I can make any other day work that's not that...
Well, you won't be...
I'll be back the following Wednesday.
Okay. Would you send me a note to tell me when you're going to be gone?
Sure.
Because obviously, we're going to have to work with the mayor...
Right.
Whether it's a special meeting or whatever. Can people make, for the data reveal, can you make a Monday meeting or like a workshop meeting? Can that be handled? Can you, people do that?
Yes.
Yeah?
The regular workshop meeting in October is the eighth.
The regular workshop meeting? Yeah, okay. I'll be talking with Paul, so I'll, let's, we'll see what we can do on that. Because I think it's important that you're here for that data reveal. And we may, who knows? One of these days, we may actually have a site plan review.
Seven, I'm sorry.
It's possible.
As Debbie said, that she's not going to be able or not going to be willing to send any of that around before the, or some kind of review.
I, I guess I was so upset that I haven't asked, gotten to the point of asking that question yet. Obviously, we have said in the past that it'd be nice if we had a preview of that information to look at, you know, ahead of time. Her inclination is basically to come in and make some presentation that we haven't seen before. I'll fight as hard as I can to see if we can get it ahead of time. Okay?
That would be nice.
All I can do. Anything else? I wish we had better luck this time.
I'd like to know why it is that until Susan and I became members of the commission, I used to see a lot of Planning Commission meetings canceled.
That was different. That was different.
That was non-CDP times.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the Jan motion.
The Jan motion, okay.
The adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, too. Thank you.
Chris is here to the bitter end.